...up with other things in the neighborhood. And it makes a lot of connections on a person-to-person level.
You know, a lot of people are sad down here. They're without their families and friends. I mean, you know, they have felt, a lot of people have felt short of their glory. But we bring them back together and stand them back up. And then they say, "What do I do now?" Well, we ask them, "What's your talent?" Today is a very important day for people to come together and skid row. People that live down here in apartments, on the streets and tents. We are family down here. So this is our opportunity to come together and party and have a wonderful time. Slept in a doorway for eight years when I got out of my first marriage. I lost everything. And when I come down here, I feel like I'm a part of. They give me courage and strength to keep believing in myself.
These events help to display the positive aspects of community because we are a community.
If these people can come and give their love and their time, I think I can do it too. Because I think we've all been there, but we came back to give back.
Enjoy a Medusa musical. Get your heart pumping with 10 Days of Modern Dance. And indulge your sweet tooth at a dessert festival. All this and things to do. The Getty Villa and Death West Theater are proud to present Medusa, a musical. The young, reluctant, and deaf hero Perseus embarks on a perilous quest to slay the snake-haired Medusa. This epic showdown between Perseus and Medusa comes to life as a musical fantasy told in Death West Theater's signature style of singing and signing. Don't miss Medusa the Musical, happening November 16th and 17th at the Getty Villa. For more info, visit getty.edu. The L.A. Dance Project presents L.A. Dances, a festival presenting historical and contemporary works. The event features 10 Los Angeles premieres of dance works that showcase collaborations with L.A.-based visual artists. L.A. Dances is the L.A. Dance Project's dedication to the city it calls home and its creative collaborators. So be sure to check out L.A. Dances Festival. For details, visit ladanceproject.org. Because dessert is always a good idea, Dessert Goals is back with the Los Angeles Dessert Fest. So what's in store for 2019? The Di-Tiki Edition. Angelinos will see one of the biggest festivals yet over two back-to-back weekends. So get your tie dye and tropical prints ready and meet or drop by the Los Angeles Dessert Fest at Evolve Project in Echo Park on November 9th, 10th, 16th, and 17th. The festivities begin at noon each day. To get more info, visit their listing on Eventbrite. Ladies, get ready for Intro to Action: Filmmaking for Female Filmmakers. This workshop moderated by the Camara Project's founding member, America Young, is focused on helping to bring more women to the action genre. Attend a panel of pro stunt coordinators offering their invaluable insight and experience. Then take part in an educational demo with pro stunt performers on how to shoot a simple fight scene. Select attendees will have hands-on experience filming with our pro guests. Intro to Action Filmmaking for Female Filmmakers happens Saturday, November 16th. For tickets, visit their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at L.A. this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. this week.
Ever notice how we no longer focus our attention on one thing at a time? We don't just walk or even just drive. We focus on so many different objects, we don't notice the dangers ahead of us. We're a distracted society. We're blind to the importance of being safe, to the things that really matter. Blind to the things that could actually save our life. We're blind to everything surrounding us. Be aware. Move with care. Watch the road.
Hi, I'm Daniel Kim with the City of Los Angeles Department of Aging. We're here to improve the quality of life, independence, health, and dignity of the older adults and family caregivers who live in our city. We have programs and services that cover a wide variety of issues facing both older adults and caregivers. Many of our direct services are provided through our local multipurpose senior centers. Our centers have access to care management, nutrition services, transportation, evidence-based programs, and more. They're also a great place for you to connect with others in your own community. If you don't know where to start, our helpful information and assistance staff are here to help. We're able to connect you to your local center and other resources like health insurance counseling, elder abuse resources, and even job training opportunities. Also, did you know that if you provide unpaid assistance to an older adult spouse, family member, neighbor, or friend, you're a family caregiver? We have resources for you through our department's family caregiver training and support. For more information and resources, you can call us at (213) 482-7252 or simply dial 311. You can also check out our website at aging.lacity.org. Together, let's make Los Angeles the best age-friendly city in the world.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, November 15th, and this council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Let's run through the agenda.
Bloomingville Bonin, Buscaino Cidio, Aristosan, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum. Madam President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Bloomingville moves and Mr. Buscaino seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. O'Farrell moves and Mr. Rue seconds. Next.
Madam President, due to the upcoming council recess, would council like to send all items forthwith today?
Without objection, that will be the order. Next.
Madam President, there are requests to continue items 1A and 1B for 60 days to January 14th, 2020.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. Next.
Items 2 is an item notice for public hearing.
Are there any cards on this?
Yes, there are cards on the item.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and continue.
Thank you, Madam President. We'll hold item 2. And then items 3 through 17 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items 3, 5, and 6 have been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration. Additionally, there is a request from a member to hold item 16 on the desk for an amending motion.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian.
I'd like to ask that we hold 17 for an amending motion as well, please.
All right, just hold item 17 for Mr. Krikorian. Anything else, sir? Any other specials, member? Let's go ahead and vote on the remaining items. Just open the roll.
And that, thank you.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, those items will pass. What's next?
And Madam President, the ordinance for item 3 will be held over to November 26th unless reconsidered later today with 12 members present.
Okay, let's go ahead and hold that for now.
And then on the continuation agenda, item 18 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Anyone want to hold that item special? Seeing none, just go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And what's next?
Madam President, that then takes council back to presentations. Items called special are general public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Are you ready? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm delighted today to have some guests with us from my home state of Zacatecas in Mexico. And I'm sure, Madam President, you'll be delighted as well, as that is your parents' home state as well.
It sure is.
And I wanted to give them a warm welcome to the City of Los Angeles, to the City Council chambers. Bienvenidos. Zacatecas is a colonial treasure known for architecture, pink cantera stone, and silver mining. In fact, because of Zacatecas, Mexico is the largest producer of silver in the world today. Additionally, the festivities held throughout the different municipalities capture the beautiful traditions that have been passed down for generations, making Zacatecas a tourist attraction nationally and internationally. And here in Los Angeles, we share a lot of common bonds, as 50% of the people born in the state of Zacatecas actually live in the United States. So there are a lot of, there's a lot of familiarity, a lot of bonds, and a lot of people in Los Angeles who have roots from the state of Zacatecas. Earlier this year, I had the pleasure of meeting Mayor Ulises Mejia Arro, as well as Ivan de Santiago Beltran, the Secretary of the Municipal Government of the City of Zacatecas. And I'm glad they are back in Los Angeles in the company of additional delegates from the capital city and the state of Zacatecas as they continue to strengthen ties on both sides of the border. Mayor Mejia Arro was sworn in as mayor of Zacatecas City in September 2018, and since then, he has tackled issues of security, promoted local businesses, and made it his goal to boost mining and agriculture. And one of the things he has supported as well is to support the rights of LGBT individuals in the state of Zacatecas. And this is really a, something that we should all be proud of here in the City of Los Angeles because we all know in the City of Los Angeles, we support LGBT rights. And in a state of Zacatecas that is traditionally very conservative, it was certainly a risk for this mayor, but he thought it was the right thing to do. And so for that, we are very proud to have him here in these council chambers as well. He has additionally prioritized bettering public services and increasing government transparency. And as you can see, he is a very young man with a promising future as he continues to move Zacatecas forward in making sure that people have opportunities and we continue the bonds with Zacatecanos on both sides of the border. At this point, I would like to ask Mayor Mejia Arro to share a few words and help me introduce the delegates who accompany him on his visit. Bienvenido alcalde, y le damos un gran abrazo aquí en la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Tiene sus amigos aquí por siempre, y le damos hoy la bienvenida a estar aquí con nosotros en la cabilda de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Bienvenido. Gracias.
Bienvenido.
Muchas gracias. Thank you very much. Good morning to everyone. It is a pleasure for us to be here with you. First of all, we would like to thank this councilman, the Council President, Herbert Wesson, to Madam President, Nuri Martinez, and to my fellow countryman, Jose Weezer, and all of you members of this government body of the City of Los Angeles to give us the opportunity to work together for the benefits of our cities. Let me tell you that the City of Zacatecas was recently named the most beautiful colonial city in Mexico. Zacatecas has the second-largest concentration of museums in the country. Our city... Our city is a place where everyone's human rights are protected without any distinction. We recently signed into law to allow same-sex marriages, and we are the second city after the city of Mexico to allow and recognize this type of marriages. Zacatecas is one of the safest cities in the state, and also is one of the less expensive ones to visit. We are not as advanced as Los Angeles, but we are making a lot of efforts and a lot of progress to extend, to have this development in our cities. We extend an invitation to come and visit Zacatecas. We are sure that you will fall in love with this beautiful city. Again, thank you very much for everyone. Thank you very much to let us be here and to share our opportunities in Zacatecas and the opportunities in this country and this city of Los Angeles. My council members, my secretaries, and I give us a present. This present is a lithography of Zacatecas, a beautiful picture of historical and traditional downtown, the city of Zacatecas. Again, thank you. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to be here with you, and we again extend you an invitation to visit and fall in love with our city. Thank you very much. Today is with us the council member Mayra Espino, is a council member of the city of Zacatecas, the council member Manuel Castillo, the council member also Iram Azazel, the secretary in the city Ivan de Santiago, and our secretary Loudes Delgado. All of them are part of this team that are working a lot in the city of Zacatecas. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and as you can see, the mayor's English is, speaks English very well. He attended SC, and for you, your USC, I knew you were going to do that. It's not USC, it's the University of Southern Carolina, by the way, right? You bit, you bit, Mr. Krikorian. And on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I want to welcome Ulises Mejia Arro, the mayor of the city of Zacatecas, and thank you for the work you're doing. Thank you for protecting human rights. Thank you for taking Zacatecas to a new level. We know it's a beautiful city with a lot of history, and you're bringing that to the forefront. We also have some certificates to the council members. To Juan de Santiago?
Ivan.
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 Thank you.
Iram Azazel Ortega?
Gracias.
María Delurdes Delgado?
Gracias.
Felipe Delgado?
Gracias.
Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Weezer, I just want to recognize our consul from Mexico, Marcela Salorio, she's here in the audience. Can you just please give her a recognizer and give her a big round of applause?
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning, colleagues. And a wonderful morning today is, because we are here to celebrate the 101st birthday of an incredible Angelino and CD4 success story, Corita Kent. To help me celebrate this day, I am joined by Nellie Scott, Director of the Corita Art Center, the team at Immaculate Heart, where Sister Corita lived and worked, and members of the Corita Kent family. For those who don't know, Corita Kent was a nun here in Los Angeles, an activist for love and compassion, and a trailblazing leader in the pop art movement of 1950s and 60s. Corita redefined the pop art movement and brought a fresh perspective to art itself. With her unique eye and her unyielding love for humanity, Corita was able to both reimagine the logos and branding that's all around us and bring people together over creative spirit. Born on November 20th, 1918, in Fort Dodge, Iowa, Corita and her family moved to Los Angeles when she was four years old, settling on De Longpre Avenue in Hollywood. She was five of six children, attended Blessed Sacrament, and graduated from Los Angeles Catholic Girls High School before entering the Order of the Immaculate Heart of Mary and taking the name Sister Mary Corita. While studying art history at USC, Corita taught herself screen printing and began making her own unique art. Her extraordinary artistic skills and vision, as well as her passion as a mentor and teacher, were reflected in this art. Corita's powerful, vibrant images addressed poverty, racism, injustice, and war with bold graphic text and colors in a style that Corita could only achieve. But don't take it from me, let's hear from Corita herself in a short video clip.
There's a great book which I'll pass around and you can take a look at. It's really good, and there's one statement in it which is from the Bellinese, and it says, "We have no art, we do everything as well as we can," which I've got a sign for Peter to make beautifully and hang one in every classroom, because I think that should be our motto for the art department. Don't you think that's a good motto? They say, "We have no art, we do everything as well as we can." See, so that you don't have art off in a little niche someplace. You have no distinction between what is art and what is not art. You do everything as well as you can.
If she wants you to go somewhere with an assignment, your very involvement in that takes you along the steps, but she ensures you that those steps will be there.
This is going to be a two-hour looking session, and there really is enough to look at for 16 hours at least. You can bring with you a little piece of cardboard in the center of which you have cut out a tiny rectangle, oh, not bigger than an inch, which you'll use for a finder. And as soon as you've got the whole place kind of surround you, then you can take your finder, and you do what a moving picture person does. He cuts off everything else and focuses on one small little place and lets you look at that. Sometimes you can take the whole of the world in, and sometimes you need a small piece to take in, and I think that's really what a work of art is, even though we don't have works of art anymore. It's a small piece that you can digest, which gives you a kind of idea of the richness that is in the whole.
Yes, and all of you have a little postcard, as Councilmember Bloomingfield is showing. And Corita was an artist, a teacher, and a clear voice for injustice. As a teacher, she encouraged her students to engage with local and global issues and join the conversation of her time through art and images. By the late 1960s, Sister Corita had become a household name. The Los Angeles Times named Corita Woman of the Year in 1966. Then in 1967, she was on the cover of Newsweek. This acclaim won her both positive and negative attention. The Catholic archdiocese began to take issue with Corita's art and tried to quell her artistic voice. Unbowed by this pressure and a clear understanding that her voice as an artist was doing more good for the world than her obedience as a nun, Corita left the church and moved to Boston. Although she was no longer a full-time Angelino, she kept a gallery space in North Hollywood and regularly returned to our city. When she died in 1986, she left behind 30,000 pieces of work, including 800 screen prints, watercolors, and photographs to the Immaculate Heart community. This collection became the Corita Art Center, and for the last 32 years, this center has promoted Corita's legacy for art, justice, and teaching. I know we say a lot, I know we say this a lot, but she truly was an angel in the city of angels, and her work lives on to this day. As we celebrate her here in the city council, the County Board of Supervisors will also be honoring this Los Angeles icon on November 19th as well. And now, say more few words about today. Director, I'd like to invite up the Director of the Corita Art Center, Nellie Scott.
Oh, great. Hello. Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Nellie Scott, and I am the Director of the Corita Art Center. I am thrilled to be here today to celebrate the continued legacy of artist and educator Corita Kent. As you heard from the councilman and have just seen in the video clip, Corita was a product of Los Angeles, and I am proud that today we are recognizing her as such. Corita saw out the art scene in Los Angeles, from museum and gallery shows to Watts Towers, and of course, the movies. But she also found meaning and ritual in everyday life and objects. Through her art, Corita shared ideas about faith, love, hope, and justice. She challenged racial and economic inequality at home, protested the war abroad, and pushed boundaries in the church and the art world. Some of this work is now over 50 years old and is still relevant. Anyone who can inspire us to show, show up to make change is invaluable. For me, that is Corita. I feel so lucky to be her champion, to show up every day from watching the news and feel a call to action. She challenges us to look at what hope really means. Hope is not optimism. Hope is hard work, and it means showing up to make change every day. At Immaculate Heart College, where she led the art department, she taught people how to look at the world literally one inch at a time. By cutting a small rectangular hole in a piece of paper, and through these details, she exposed beauty and injustice. Through her influence, Immaculate Heart College became a thriving, creative, and socially engaged community in Hollywood. Buckminster Fuller, Charles Eames, Alfred Hitchcock, and John Cage were just a few of the illustrious guest lecturers that Corita hosted in her Great Men series. Fuller spoke of his time there as amongst the most fundamentally inspiring experiences of my life. We hope to recreate some of that same spirit next week when we revive Corita's event series, instead of the Great Men series, as the Great Human series, and host Roxanne Gay and Abby Jacobson in conversation about creativity, comedy, and activism. If you are not yet familiar with Corita, I hope you will get to know her. I also hope you will take with you today the finder that you found at your seat and explore the world Corita-style, in all of its joyous detail. I feel so strongly that Corita is the cultural icon that we all need, rebellious yet hopeful. For today's world, she still has so much to teach us. Thank you.
Thank you, Nellie. Next, we'll have Carol Scholkin, President of the Immaculate Heart Community.
Good morning, members of the council and those gathered here today. It's truly a pleasure to speak Corita's name in this city, to this context, where the public sector is where she saw a lot of hope, and much of her art speaks of stirring up hope. We, as the Immaculate Heart community, were the context for her, following her family, of course, but the context in which she discovered the artist within her, and it was a profound awakening of possibility, the possibility that each person holds within them. And I think part of the legacy she leaves for us as a community, community of Los Angeles and also the Immaculate Heart community, is to never underestimate the planting of seeds and the stirring up of hope. We each hold that possibility, and I wanted to share just a few of the words on her artwork that are in the hallway at our community office, which is also the Corita Art Center office, which is at the corner of Western and Franklin. We've been here in Los Angeles 133 years now as educators, builders of schools, builders of hospitals, seeking justice and equity for all people. And in the hallways, you will see spoken, and these are just some that I wrote down this morning walking over there. "Hope is the memory of the future. Have a hand in it." Love, and she does this with her rainbow, which is on the gas tank in Boston as well. Love is hard work. Come alive. Get with the action. And then, late in her life, she was affected by cancer, and at that point, she had moved to the East Coast and needing more outdoor, more space, and found a new kind of beauty there, and she turned from silk screening, which was her major media, to watercolors. And this is a watercolor print that she did late in her journey with cancer, and pictured swashes of blue and green with her watercolor brush upon which she wrote, "For everything that lives is holy. Life delights in life." That is a big part of her message, and I invite you to embody it in your own ways. Thank you so much, City of Los Angeles, for recognizing Corita as an artist.
Thank you, President Scholkin. Finally, we are so very lucky to be joined by members of Corita's family. We have Linda Hope and Pam Hoff.
Hi, thank you. I'm Pam Hoff, and my mother-in-law, Mary Downey, was Corita's sister and best friend, and I love them both dearly, and Mary was so helpful when Corita made that transition from a nun to a private citizen, went to Boston to help her set up a household, because of course, Corita never had to set up a kitchen before, right? So also, Mary and Corita developed the art gallery that was on White Lynn that was mentioned, right around the corner from my mother-in-law, and my father-in-law, Frank, there was a family joke, and he always said to Corita, "You know what? I think it..." I think a kindergartner could do your artwork," which was really ongoing in the family. But Corita, I really feel, is a treasure of Los Angeles, and her work, which really encompasses the themes of social justice and peace and humanity. And one of her good friends, Stan Barrigan, and his brother, which were known as the Barrigan Brothers, they had been very involved in the Vietnam War protests and had burned draft cards and were put in jail. But I asked Corita about it, and she said, "You know, I'm not the type of person that actually goes out and demonstrates and marches, but my work is in my art. That's my activism," which is so true. And one wonderful thing that happened back in 1985 was that the doctors or physicians of social responsibility that actually have a chapter here in LA asked her to do a billboard. And I went to see one that was on the 101 freeway going towards San Luis Obispo, and the words were, "We can make life, not war." And I thought, what a wonderful message for all those cars driving north to take in every day. And a fun story was, of course, iconic 22-cent postal service stamp. And Corita boycotted the unveiling of this stamp because it was on the ABC sitcom stage for The Love Boat. And of course, that wasn't the type of love that she wanted to get across. You know, it was more humanity and loving everyone. So, that was her protest, because she really thought it was like the colors of the flags that embraced the National or the United Nations Building in New York, all those colorful flags. But one thing I think maybe some of you don't know, that is in 2016, Corita was one of the inductees of the 10th class for the California Hall of Fame in Sacramento, which was a really wonderful honor, because what it represented was California people not only representing the state, but our nation and internationally. And it was a very wonderful, wonderful honor. And Governor Brown sent his assistant up and brought, for both Linda Kent and myself, pictures of the, that he had, the serigarettes that she had made for California. But just, I would really like to say that she really had the ability to just laser in with people, to really listen to them, and make them feel that they were the only person in the room. And I saw this over and over again when I took her to events and saw this on this kind of side and watched her. And she really embraced such a wonderful warmth and spirit. And yes, her artwork and messages are still current and really speaks to everyday issues facing our state, our nation, our world. And I would just like to comment on one of my favorite serigarettes that I have, and it says, "The groundwork doesn't show till one day," and I think it's her day now. Thank you so much for honoring her.
My name is Linda Kent, and I am Corita's niece. I'm Corita, who we are going to celebrate her distinctive art and message through her prints on November 20th. I am so excited. Her art represents the human compassion from experiences that she went through as a young woman. My grandmother raised six children during hard times during the 1920s. Corita entered the Immaculate Heart Order, where she was sent to teach young children. She told me that she got connected to the primary colors during this time, and that's very important, because if you look at her art, she always, she develops her art through the primary colors. When coming back to Hollywood to teach art at the Immaculate Heart College, my family would visit her every Sunday. It was a special, it was so special to go to her art classroom to see her work. She traveled to many countries and brought back items from those countries which she let us play with. My mother was nervous as ever, but she just said, "Enjoy yourself and explore." Very special times for me and my brother, Richard, who is not here, he is in New Jersey, and this is my brother, Bob Kent. Leaving the order was very hard for Corita, but she told me it was the right thing to do, to be able to have freedom to create her passion of art without any constriction. Her art represented love of humanity. She used to say she would see the goodness in people. Through her art, she tells the story of a good, of the good and hardship of life in this world we live in. Corita was such a good listener to people's stories. She just loved to listen, and she would laugh and have a good time. She so enjoyed the family. Thanksgiving Day visits were so special at our house. When she left the nuns, you know, I always saw her in a habit my whole life, and she came in and she had this bright-colored stripe dress on with pink nylons on, and we just laughed because we thought it was so great. It was just her. My special day with Corita was when she came to visit my third-grade students and worked with them in the art, with an art activity. "So great," as Corita would say. Thank you again for recognizing my Aunt Corita and making November 20th a special day for Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Pam, Carol, and Nellie. And now, without further ado, I'd like to present this resolution declaring today Corita Kent Day in the City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Well, good morning, Madam President and members. It wasn't that long ago that we were sitting in this body deliberating over the hiring of the city's first petroleum administrator in a very, very long time. And now, because of the great job he's done, we're sending him off to a new job in Sacramento as the head of the state's Division of Oil, Gas, and Geothermal Resources, sometimes known as DOGger. With the Health and Safety Buffer Zone legislation, we basically asked him to do something that really hasn't been done before in the city, or any city of this size, where oil and gas operations have been unfortunately located in and around many neighborhoods for decades, if not centuries. And he delivered a massive document and a roadmap to help make it happen. I thank you, Udoak, for always being responsive, professional, and helpful to my office's considerable lists of requests and questions, and also emergencies, like our Mercaptain escape at our Rancho Park facility. And on behalf of the city, we thank you for your service and look forward to working with you in the future in your considerably more influential position in state government to really help us get a grip on one of the world's most dangerous and polluting industries. So, thank you so much for your service, and it's my honor to present this certificate from the city.
I can't hear you. Can you turn on Mr. Coretts' mic, please?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Coretts.
Is it on yet? Yes. I know Council President Herb Weston also wanted to send his thanks and congratulations, but wasn't able to be here today. So, thank you on his behalf as well.
Thank you. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to rise and recognize Udoak for his commitment to service here in the City of Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. Coretts, for bringing him in and sharing with us his successes, his contributions to our city. What you've done in, I would say, a short time has been valuable to our city and representing a part of the city that is surrounded by heavy industrial. The buffer zone on the oil drilling report has gone nationwide and has sparked a lot of interest from all parts of the country, so appreciate that commitment as well. But also, more importantly, I know it's a loss for us, as I mentioned to you, Udoak, but it's also having someone that understands municipalities and local government at DOGger is so important for us as a city, for me, politically, personally, because, again, representing, you know, a heavy industrial area in CD-15, we can turn to you. We can turn to you as a friend. You understand us, you get us, and this is important for us to have someone at DOGger leading that can relate to local municipalities and our demands, and I really appreciate the fact that, yes, you're taking on this new role. It's a little loss for us, but it's a gain in many ways. So, congratulations, and looking forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm going to be voting no on this. Oh. You know, I just found out today, and I'm in shock, but it's no surprise, because you were the best. And while I joke that you can't go, because there's so much work that needs to be done here in City Hall and the City of Los Angeles, Governor Newsom sees talent, and he knows the special skill that you have. So, even though you are leaving Los Angeles, you are not leaving this policy issue and this important environmentalism and everything that has to do with it. And the policies that you're going to be working on and setting up in the state of California will be affecting us. So, you are still part of Los Angeles. You are still our friend. We will still work closely with you, and it's great to have an ally like you up in the state. So, while I am very, very disappointed and sad to see you leave, thank you for all of your service to the City of Los Angeles and for your continued service to Los Angeles and the state of California. Thank you. And thank you for doing this, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Back to you, Mr. Coretts.
Well, thank you, everyone. It's been really a professional honor in my life to work for the City of Los Angeles, to serve the more than 4 million people that make up the second-largest city in America. This was a job that, you know, you can't really get ready for. And any day, I may have to do a memo for the mayor, who's going to meet with the Pope tomorrow, or I may have to do a pipeline franchise agreement. I had the opportunity to go to India on behalf of the city and do an international air quality summit. It was just from one day to another, it was something different. But I grew up as a Boy Scout. It was always be prepared, but another principle is always leave some, no matter where you go, leave it better than you found it. And I think we're in a much better position today than we were three years ago to understand the oil and gas infrastructure, the health impacts, the revenue, the different constituent groups. And I think what's really been helpful is getting everybody in the room talking together, because we can get common solutions. So, thank you so much for the recognition, and I look forward to continue working together.
Mr. Sadio, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Ready for your presentation?
Yeah? Todos?
Todos.
Okay. Madam Chair, thank you so much. We're so excited to be here this morning. You know, it's the 50th anniversary in many respects, the 50th birthday, the cumpleaños, 50 years of the sister-city relationship between Mexico de Hefe, or Mexico City as it's referred to, and the City of Los Angeles. Imagine the vision of our leaders 50 years ago who established this partnership and who thought that it would be important to build these historic bonds between our city and our nation. When you think today of the relationships that exist, the importance of this, that Los Angeles is the largest city of Mexicans outside of Mexico City, you can understand how important it is for our cities to continue to build bridges in the era of walls. Important for us to continue to elevate our communities through cultural exchange, like the current art exhibit sponsored by Ultimate that is touring and began in Mexico City, our economic exchange, the importance of new trade agreements, and the technological partnerships that exist between our city, our two cities. And so, it's with that that we're here today, to make sure that during these difficult and dark times between, or dark times within our nation, that these relationships stay strong, and that they're stronger than ever, because this is the most critical time for us. You know, Mexico City is very dear to my heart, because I've had the opportunity as a professional to visit it on many occasions. I was honored to be an observer on two of the elections, in the most recent election, and I've had the privilege and honor of meeting with the leadership of the city, joined by our mayor, in the past by Governor Gray Davis. And so, it's with great honor and privilege that we are here today. I note that Monica Rodriguez was with us in our delegation to Mexico City. And so, I want to point out, and this is just a little point of personal privilege, the shelter that we opened up in my district is inspired, in fact, by the Museum of Frida Kallo in Mexico City. In fact, we have the name Casa Azul, and we've tried to make sure that we've created an environment that is of dignity and respect, and that acknowledges the importance of culture between our two cities, and ensures that those who are going through a difficult moment are placed in a position that is aspirational, and we're very proud of what we've accomplished there. Just so that we can get a little spice, a little taste, a little, small little stone within a giant mural of the culture of Mexico, we have a special presentation today. Esteban, Esteban Leon is here this morning for us, little, and I say little, not that his presentation won't be significant for all of us, but that the culture of Mexico City is so extraordinary, if you've had the privilege and honor of being there. And so, this is just one little example, as significant as you'll find it. Señor.
Buenos dias. No es un recuento de daños sino fiesta con jaranas, pues dos ciudades hermanas llegan a los cincuenta años. De compartir los peldaños que junta subiendo van y celebrando hoy están su medio siglo en pareja. Los Ángeles hoy festeja con la gran Tenochtitlan. Mis ciudades chinampan en un lago escondido. Es ensontle que busca en donde acernido. Reilete que engaña la vista al girar. Baila el sol del tequila y de su valentía. Es quinete que arriesga la vida en un lienzo de fiesta y color. Mi ciudad es la cuna de un niño dormido. Es un bosque de espejos que cuida a un castillo chapultepec. Monumentos de gloria que velan su andar. Es un sol con penacho y sarape veteado que en las noches se viste de charro y se pone a cantarle al amor. Por las tardes con la lluvia se va a su piel morena. Y al desatarse las trenzas sus ojos tristes se cierran. Mis ciudades chinampan en un lago escondido. Es ensontle que busca en donde acernido. Reilete que engaña la vista al girar. Baila el sol del tequila y de su valentía. Es quinete que arriesga la vida en un lienzo de fiesta y color. Es un sol con penacho y sarape veteado que en las noches se viste de charro y se pone a cantarle al amor. Al amor.
As I said, an incredible example, but just a small bit of the cultural richness that exists in Mexico City that you can see at any time of the day throughout the entire city. Let me bring the organizers up, Jose Pablo Martinez and Sergio Infanzon. You'll recognize Sergio Infanzon from his time in my office to make a few brief comments on today's event.
Good morning. Thank you. We would like to thank first to the Consul member Gil Sadio, to the Mexican Consulate in the city of Los Angeles, the Ambassador Marcella Celorio, to Mr. Raul Cruz Viero, Racrufi, of course Sergio Infanzon, for the support and willingness to help us celebrate Mexico City, Los Angeles, sister cities. But, thank, 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 thank you to my people. My people is behind me, so it's one day special. Thank you for my people for coming. It's a difficult day, but very special to thank today. Thank you, thank you, my people, to my roots, to my community. Thank you.
I miss this place. It's a beautiful place to work, and I want to thank Consul member Sadio, Consul Marcella Celorio, and everybody on the Mexican consulate who provided the opportunity to do this celebration together. I'm from Mexico City. I was born over there, and even though I have lived here most of my life, I still believe that Mexico City is one of the most beautiful and greatest cities in the world. And I just want to tell you, go beset because it's a very nice place, but in terms of the celebration, we're going to continue. We're going to have a symposium at the end of this presentation outside on the forecourt, and this afternoon at 6:00, we're going to have some festivities at the Mexican consulate, and everybody is invited. So, thank you for this opportunity, and viva Mexico, viva Los Angeles.
One of the great honors and privilege of my professional life has been to develop stronger and richer relationships with the Mexican consulate, and today it's my honor to introduce the Consul General on behalf of the city of Los Angeles. Marcella, we are just so excited to have you this morning and always great to see you. You bring such professionalism and such intellect to this challenging post in this challenging moment.
Thank you so much.
Please.
Good morning, Consul men, Consul women. Well, 50 years, in a way, I'm related to that number, and I think it's a fantastic number, 50 years of this wonderful relationship. As we learned with Corita, and remember when I came here, is I'm going to focus always in the values we share, and I think that through culture, arts, we're making it happen, and we're keep on walking. I want to special, give a special thanks to Consulman Gil Sadio, Jose Pablo Martinez, del Club Identidad de la Ciudad de México, our maestro on the staff, Racrufi. And of course, my team, especially to Cynthia Prida, that is our cultural attaché, and she has been working very closely with them to make this happen. So, thank you so much to todos los chilangos. Gracias.
It's very common and typical, and everyone knows, well, not everyone knows, chilangos is a term. They even have magazines for those who come from Mexico City. It's kind of the way people think of us from Los Angeles. And so, for those who don't know, those are the chilangos. Marcella, it's such an honor and privilege to continue this relationship with our two great cities, and we thank you for playing this historic role in this partnership.
Thank you so much.
There's still pressure.
You're here?
Ya, todos tienen? Si? Es foto, no cultura.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sadio.
Okay, thank you.
Listen.
If I call your name, please come up to the podium.
And Madam President, for the record, amending motion 16A has been posted, submitted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Thank you very much. Cory Schmidt, are you still here? Cory, come on up, followed by Armando Herman, Lynn Moses, Antonia Ramirez, and Wayne Spindler. If I call your name, I need you to come up to the podium, please. Cory, come on up. Cory, you're speaking on item 16-2 in general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, so Cory Schmidt, for the record, number, let's talk about, so 16 is the Lamp Lodge Supportive Housing. I see that there's a bunch of supportive housing and different stuff for the homeless on this agenda. I like to concur with all of that. I like what you guys are doing in that regard. In regards to number 17, though, we're talking about Ellis Act Tenant Relocation, and I find it funny that we're talking about the helping, but at the same time, we're also stealing properties from people that haven't paid their taxes. So, kind of playing both sides of the field, I see. Let's see, number two is senior housing. So, another thing we're dropping $30 million on, and I just want to see that we're actually doing good stuff with this money because I've seen other stuff like something Breeze Properties, something like that. There was some sort of weirdness going on with the money there. So, I just want to make sure that we're actually using the funds for what they're for. So, let's jump to general real quick. I just want to say that I'm still in the trenches. There's definitely lead hazard warning, you know, there's, we should find funding for that, but I ultimately think that we should be severing the ties with these individuals that aren't, you know, doing good for the community. I see that we should be getting more liens for these giant properties. I think that that's due because I'm ready for the wrecking ball. I'm ready for that to be rented. I'm excited, actually, to see that rented. So, like I said, lots of homeless help, I'm into that, except for Gray Mercy. Fuck Gray Mercy. And let's see, the tax swoop. Oh, and I know that there's been less vegan options at the water and power thing, so I believe that there could be remediation services there. I think that that's a good idea, but I think that we'll have to focus on those vegan options.
Thank you, Cory. Armando Herman?
Sorry, he's behind me.
Armando Herman, followed by Lynn Moses, Antonia Ramirez, Wayne Spindler, and Eric Previn. You're speaking on item 16-2 in general public comment.
So, let the record reflect this concern. I'm here to serve. I'm here to serve the community on homelessness. Why is that? Why would I want to serve the community on homelessness and poverty when there's $13 billion under H.R. 1856? Corporate greed under the color of the law. Es un de la reflexión de putos. Corruption.
So, Mr. Herman, I don't understand.
I'm dealing with item 16 for the record, Madam Clerk. You sound like a man. Without advertisement, which I'm doing advertisement. It's advertisement, 18 U.S.C., 242, 245 for the record, to report a hostile environment. Recommendations subject of that of the mayor to adopt accompanying resolution for Los Angeles Housing and Community Investment. LSA, fuck you. In addition to that, services under LSA failed under A.P.N. 514702948, nigger.
Mr. Herman, I don't understand.
And then on item 17, LSA.
You're not signed up for item 17, Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, you're off, you're off topic.
Herman, get on back on the items that I asked you to speak on. If not, move on to your general public comment.
Marie, fuck you. Impeachment, fuck you. I'm on general public comment now, assholes. I'm on Obama-Bush 0950529. Shoot the nigger. Shoot the nig. Stop fucking with free speech. Stop suppressing me. Stop monitoring me. Stop bringing emotional distress when you interrupt me under the Brown Act, a complete violation of our civil rights of action under 18 U.S.C. 242, 245, color of the law. Now you're listening. Now let me get back to the real shit I'm talking about. That is, if we lose the edge, I'm on control. Point of order. Tell them, Donald Trump, fuck you impeachment, no cake for Alexis, no cake for Noory, no cake for the clerk, and no fucking cake for Mike Fuer, you motherfuckers. Thank you. For the record, sir.
Please sit down, Mr. Herman. Your time is up. Madam Clerk, can we go ahead and reconsider item number three? Just go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That item is now before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. Mr. Moses, you want to come on up, sir? You're speaking on item 16-2 in general public comment.
Thank you very much. First, Mr. Bonin, it's come to my attention that you represented Ruth Galanter at the opening ceremony of the AFEBA Center 20 years ago. Thank you for your service, sir. Ruth Galanter, a white woman.
Mr. Moses, can you hold on?
In contrast, we get eviction notice from this guy.
Mr. Moses.
Yes, I understand.
If you want to go on to general public comment, I can give you your minute.
Number two, item number two.
Speak on the items. Thank you.
This is $30 million for 157 units. This is gross still. It's better. Just last, on the 31st, you had an item for $46 million for 96 units. That's $497,000 a unit. This project on item number two is $192,000 per unit. Still, these units can be built. You're wasting taxpayer dollars. You're not going to go, going to be able to go back to the public because they're sick and tired of it. You haven't built one unit of homeless housing, and you're building them at a rate of about $600,000 apiece. The public is sick and tired of it. These units can be built for as little as $30,000, $35,000. Like I said, on 1031, you have, this one's 400, almost $500,000 a unit. Donald Trump can live in these places. Stop wasting the taxpayer dollars. We've heard a lot of stuff. We haven't heard anything about the homeless.
Go ahead, sir. You have your one minute of general public comment now.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Bonin, thank you very much. Mr. Kukarian, Mr. Rue, you serve your communities. What a stark contrast. The black community has no representation. That's why we're here. That's why I'm here. Dawson sitting there serves himself. Evict, king of evictions. Evict the EDD office on Crenshaw Boulevard instead of helping the community, has one of the highest unemployment rates in the city. He tries to get the office for himself. Criminal activity. Evict 206-unit housing at Dorset Village. Evict the AFEBA Center. Criminal activity. You got your $26 million for destination destruction.
Mr. Moses, thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Moses? Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker is- Next speaker is Antonio Ramirez. Just go ahead and give it to the sergeant, he'll pass it out to us. Thank you.
And while Ms. Ramirez is coming up... Mr. Herman, during Mrs. Rose's comments, you were gesticulating and distracting us the entire time. I'm sure it's very disruptive to the people sitting behind you. Please be still.
Mr. Herman, you're last in front of warning. Ms. Antonio Ramirez, you're speaking on item sixteen-two and general public comment. I'm going to ask you to please stay on the agenda items, please.
We are homeless. Herman and myself are homeless. Now, and we suffer due to terrorizing of the crime out there. Thirty million dollars for providing financing for one hundred and fifty-seven-unit senior housing, this is outrageously excessive, outright waste, fraud, abuse, and theft. But guess who's pocketing all the money? Yes, the fucking kikes, elite satanic Zionist Jew, highly skilled thieves and motherfuckers. And you wonder why we're homeless and impoverished? Jesus Christ! And you wonder why they live up in Beverly Hills and Century City? Number sixteen. Ladies and gentlemen, there is no poverty-homeless Holocaust resolution until you remove all the fucking Democrats and napalm the George Soros Illuminati criminal empire. It is beginning to crumble. The Rockefellers, the Rothschilds, the Kissingers, the J.P. Morgans. Enjoy the fucking fall, assholes.
Ms. Ramirez, hold on for just a second. Do you need to get back on the topics? Item sixteen or items two? I can just give you your general public comments.
Okay, number seventeen, I apologize here.
Sixteen and number two.
Okay, well, so now I have, ladies and gentlemen, we again... We have over seventy-five thousand homeless people in the L.A. County alone, and God help us. We are compounding diseases, we are compounding danger, we are compounding infections, and we are compounding and sabotaging education, the health, the welfare, and safety of all residents, whether they are homeless or not homeless, because you are going to be contaminated sooner or later, those who are not homeless. You're going to catch scabies, MRSA, bedbugs, staph infections, every form of chronic diseases and airborne bacteria. You're going to catch it, sooner or later, you will. If you don't get off the ball and start doing something to house and disinfect the fucking city, because we know Eric is a fucking pig. He has not disinfected the city, he's a fucking pig. How do you come into a city and not disinfect the streets, the surfaces, the whole envi... Even City Hall? You are all contaminated, just as much as all those who are homeless. Look at you, man! So why don't you do something? Clean the fucking city. And my public comments. Ladies and gentlemen, we have three criminal empires in La Placita, and that is La Church, the church, La Placita, and that is run by the Padrecito, and his name is El Padre Arturo. El Padrecito is un hipócrito, chueco, tramposo, y un ratero cabrón que viola la humanidad, especialmente de las mujeres. No den dinero, no den dinero a esta iglesia católica. Son podridos y rateros. And number two, the other criminal empire is La Plaza de Cultura y Artes at five-zero-one North Main Street, L.A., California, nine double oh twelve. Those two entities try to flood water and throw us out and attack the homeless women, and they engage in crime activities with the gangbangers, and they're bringing in niggers to assault, attack, and beat us women from Skid Row area. Who protects the Latina women? Nobody! Nobody! We get robbed, attacked, and beaten by these motherfucking niggers. Who helps us? No one!
Ms. Ramirez, please don't shout. Ms. Ramirez. Wayne Spindler, followed by Eric Previn. Item sixteen-two and general public comment.
Where's that? Thank you, you fat cunt. Now, we get to the stealing. It's all Marquisi Harris's fault, number two. That's why he turning his bald head to me, because a hundred and ninety-seven thousand a unit, fool! That's right. He, Marquisi, sitting there talking to pigs right now. He trying to figure out, Eduardo, how do I hide, number two? Well, it's very simple. You go and you do the giggles. See over there? He giggling, big old giggle steal. Giggle, 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 giggle. I'm robbing from the Jews to the Jews. That's right. No fucking good. Sleazy Marquisi making it so easy to sit there and steal for the Hebrew. That's what he does. Now we get to the homeless shit. What's this lie today? You gonna do what for the homeless? You ain't gonna do shit for the homeless. The homeless just gonna continue to be homeless, dreaming of the day. When will the homeless get some of that cake like last week? When will they join fat cunts like Noory and Alexis and Monica eating that lovely delicious homeless cake in the honor of homelessness? When will they gouge their big fat fucking mouths and get enough food in their belly to create a big badass like them two bitches? That's the American dream. Get out of a tent and become a big fat cunt just like them. And then to turn around, let's... Shut up, goat! Shut your mouth! I'm on my tech...
Spindler, you're not... You're not to address any council member directly?
Mr. Spindler, address the council.
Time, Whitey. Now, we get here today, where's the pimp Herb Wesson? Where is the draft dodger? Where is he? He running out of here with a cigarette in that tiny little chimpanzee styled mouth with the fucking yellow teeth, smoking cigarettes and throwing them all over the place in the South Lawn. I keep picking up his cigarette butts. He calls me boy. That means Japanese, for he love me. And he don't want to listen to AFEBA. He don't want to listen to homeless. He don't want to listen to the budget. He out there right now smoking, sitting there with them cigarettes. Even Mike Bonin's getting up right now. He wants a cigarette. Well, actually, he wants to get some dope, which there's a couple of people here want to help him with that, because he was a lot funnier with Ms. Cantor when he used to be high, but now he look like a dumb jackass in a suit. Thank you so much. Have a good week, fat soul.
Next speaker, Mr. Previn. Item sixteen-two and general public comment.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and I'll take note at the item sixteen amendment, where you're clarifying that it's the adjusted mean income, fifty percent of the adjusted mean income to qualify in that particular case. But I had a question. How is it, for example, where you have forty-seven thousand dollars for thirty units of motel vouchers for families, and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars per family? That's forty-seven thousand per thirty. Each family gets that amount for hotel vouchers, and then for congregate housing. But who decides? Is it Mr. Harris-Dawson? Because look who he's talking to, whereas his people are here. He doesn't care about the local... He's gonna hand it out like tutelage, and that is what concerns me about this agenda. It looks like a big, nice group of council members trying to do some things for the homeless center, but when you look into the details, like a navigation center in CD two... Thank you, sir. But honestly, Youth Policy Institute just got frogmarched, that guy Dixon Slingerland. We had services in CD two, CD four. I know Rue is still here congratulating himself on his big lengthy presentation, but I don't understand, like, who's gonna put it in those positions? And are we gonna get a fair and reasonable process, or is it just gonna be yet another plank, we'll stick some, you know, from the panel set of crooks? And with regard to that, I don't know Hazen and Sawyer, whatever, but this is a group. We heard about it in budget. Looked like Kukarian was gonna ask them some questions, because they're jacking it up from thirty million to forty-eight point five million. That's an eighteen point five million. Mr. Busciano, you'll get up for that kind of money, right? That's a big deal, but why? Not one word to the public about why. And he said he was gonna ask, but he had to run across the hall to escort Bonin through the airport LAX debacle, where he came out sounding like a good guy. So it's a bunch... Shifting, you know, back and forth, it's a bunch of bullshit. And frankly, Elizabeth Greenwood, who is a city attorney who sits upstairs and lies for a living... I'll take my one minute in public comment, though, yeah. My general public comment, I'll just want to talk about this woman, Elizabeth Greenwood, who sat up in Herb Wesson's office, talking about, with the city attorney who's now getting up and shifting around himself, Mr. Faubel, about, hey, why don't you file a big five million dollar claim against us? See what I'm saying? And then we'll create this big false narrative about how the building needs to be re-cleaned up and everything like that, and meantime, we'll take care of you. Now, has that been settled yet, sir? I'd like to know if it's been settled. It should be rejected completely by the city attorney. And I've also asked Mr. City Attorney to provide Mr. Fuer's, whatever you call it, like a transcript, his deposition, which you said you would give me on Monday. It's now several days later, and that is frankly, a red flag. And finally, item number two, you've got your TEFRA hearings. TEFRA hearings are, of course, important. It's not actually thirty million dollars for all of the units, it's a bond. But what's important about that is that they're required to do certain things, like ADA compliance. But wasn't it this very same body that was looking away? Mr. Sidio, you love looking away from TEFRA hearing facts, and allowing wild Willets and other kinds of...
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
...Miling, you know, abuse of the process.
The next speaker is Mike Greenspan. Are you still here? Mike, item sixteen-two and general public comment.
Can I get three minutes?
Items and one for general public comment.
Okay. Mike Greenspan, an eight-and-two Florida Gator, UCLA. I still don't see him, at least not in the winner's column. Now, one of the things, we're talking about spending more money. I sure wish they would show pictures of these units we're buying. Now, I'm not digressing, but when I was in fifth grade, a guy said, "You're fat." And I said, "You live in a shack." He lived in this dilapidated white trash shack, no electricity, no running water. I didn't realize I was seeing prophecy. Herb's Housing, dilapidated white trash shacks, no electricity, no running water. We've got a hundred and fifty-seven on the number two. I mean, that's why perhaps we don't show pictures of these things, because it's really hard, when you've got these dilapidated white trash shacks as housing, to be proud of it. I mean, after all, why don't we just show off some housing? We pay the money for it. Why don't we just show it to the people? We sure reach our hand, grubby paws out to get our money, don't you? After all, a dollar lease, well, gee, can I go have the same opportunity as others? Yes, I think that's item sixteen or seventeen. And then one is about, let me... About the right of first refusal. I know that the city wants to get stuff below market rate illegally, do all kinds of little tricks and games. They'll seize anything they can, any way they can. And of course, well, we're the suckers paying the bills. So what do you expect? The sixteen and seventeen...
So sixteen is open. I think you're not on sixteen. I think you're going with seventeen, but please stick to two and sixteen.
Okay. About right of first refusal after people have been evicted. Baby killers, I'll take my general public comment.
One minute?
Okay. Once again, why don't we, speaking of the homeless, why don't we do this ring around Westwood, around the UCLA campus for the homeless? Kind of similar to that Hands Across America gimmick from nineteen eighty-six. I know we'd get one ring. I'm curious how many rings we would get around the UCLA campus. There's plenty of homeless people in Westwood. After all, we should be taking that money ill-spent, tens of millions of dollars, and transferring it from the state level down to the local county level to use it for homeless support services. I know that this homeless game is nothing but an excuse to raise taxes. I saw that thing at the special meeting with Mr. Sidio and Mr. Wesson. They wanted to do these Lego three-D printout houses, and of course, raise the state income tax. After all, let's get real about it. We know you don't care about anything, so at least take the money from your sucky Bruins and use it for the community.
All right, thank you. That concludes speakers for item number sixteen. So let's go ahead and vote on item sixteen as amended. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, that item passes. Let's move on to multiple... Continue with multiple items. Rob Quan, are you still here? Followed by Nunez R. Is there someone with that last name and initial? Nunez R? And Tanya Edwards? Tanya Edwards? Rob, you're speaking on item two and general public comment.
I have two minutes.
You signed up for item two and general public comment is what I have you for.
Yeah, I've only got a minute here.
Because it's only one item, and then your other item for general public comment.
As far as affordable housing, I have concerns that, you know, not only are we going to be unable to build affordable housing in our corrupted city council, but nobody's going to have any faith in this system. And when we try to build affordable housing, low-income units, or housing for the homeless, we always face NIMBYism, and the worst thing that we have is a council that nobody can trust. I wonder how we're going to be able to build that trust as we continue a perpetuation of corporate personhood in the city of L.A. For my general public comment, I'd like to turn to the Rules Committee earlier today. Unfortunately, on the agenda, only one neighborhood council was listed. There were fourteen neighborhood councils that submitted community impact statements that should have been reflected. What we saw earlier today was a continuation of delay and dilution. We couldn't even see the one thousand dollar disclosure threshold for vested payments move forward. If this is the game that city council wants to enshrine, then I'll play it. I have to ask myself now, what would working Californians do? They would do reform by any legal means necessary. I think if a lot of people in this room threaten this council and say, "I'm gonna run against you, I'm gonna vote for somebody against you," and that means very little to you. For the people in the audience, the things that really scare these people shitless are independent expenditures, and you can also run issue ads with no regulations at all. So keep that in mind. You should also keep in mind that it only takes sixty thousand signatures to put a measure on the ballot. I promise you, you'll like what I was asking for earlier today better than what I put on the ballot.
Next speaker. Next speaker, Nunez R. Is anybody here with that last name, Nunez? Tanya Edwards?
Tanya Edwards, yes.
Are you Ms. Edwards?
Tanya.
Okay. So you're speaking on items number... Item number two and general public comment. Did you mean to speak on item number two?
Okay. I'm talking about the homeless here.
Item number two?
So, this is what I have a problem with. We have a really large population in L.A. that are homeless, and today I saw a lot of recognition, and I don't have nothing against the Spanish culture, with all due respect to you, ma'am, but I don't see no black recognition at all. I don't see you guys talking about the things that we are trying to do and build for our black people so that they can become like us and make an honest living. They're on the streets, and it's so many of them, but yet you want to evict the one very community center, black community center, that we have off Crenshaw and Slauson in our Nipsey Hussle Square. You guys want to destroy that and take that from us, when we should be sending people over here who would like to train our kids to become engineers, to become big things like lawyers and doctors. You guys should not take away the AFEBA Center. That is the only thing we have.
Ma'am, hold on for just a second. You have your one minute of general public comment now.
Let me finish. Okay. That is the only thing we have as a nucleus. We have people that are willing to come in and train our females on not to be prostitutes, but to become big judges and sit in seats like you. We have those people available, and we have places like the AFEBA Center that will house that, but we don't have our city council member... He's over there laughing at me. This is not a joke, Marquis. This is not a joke, Marquis.
Ma'am, you need to address the entire body.
Don't laugh, because we are talking to you.
Ma'am, I need you to address the entire body of the city council, ma'am.
After your phone. After your phone.
Okay, you're done, ma'am. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Michael Hunt. Are you here, Red Chief? Is he here? Okay, so now that concludes speakers for item number two. So let's go ahead and vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Mr. Rue, are you ready to speak on item seventeen?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. I just wanted to add a correction or an amendment to both items, recommendations one and two, to basically add the CLA, not just H Sid for report backs, or to work on it.
Okay. I'll go ahead and second that. So now that item's before us, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, members, just go back to general public comment. If I call your name, please come on up. Rachel Reyes? Rachel Reyes? Followed by... Followed by Karina Soto, are you here? Karina, come on up. Jose, Jose Avan? Danielle Cole? If I call your name, please come on up. You have one minute of general public comment, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Reyes, and I've been a retail worker for five years and a manager for three years across three different luxury retail brands. Being a manager doesn't shield me from the unfair scheduling practices that are happening throughout this city. Just this month, my district manager asked me with two days' notice to change my monthly schedule, and I was made to work 60 hours with one day off just last week. Yesterday, I worked 12 hours. Workers, including myself, have no protection when we're asked to make these changes. I've had previous managers who scheduled based off of favoritism or retaliation, which is not good for the worker or the business. My own management style is collaborative in every way possible, and proper scheduling is necessary to achieving a democratic workplace. I know it is entirely possible to do this because I do it now with my own staff. All it takes is the desire to respect and know your employees. If we want to empower all retail workers in LA, and I believe we do, it starts in our businesses, and it starts with a fair work week. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Karina Reyes, I'm sorry, Soto, followed by Jose Avan and Danielle Cole?
Good morning. My name is Karina Soto, and I have worked at a Staples in downtown LA for the past seven years. I have never had a set schedule, my hours have always varied week to week, and this causes me a lot of unnecessary stress because I do not have a reliable income every week. Sometimes that means that I don't always have enough money to pay certain bills or afford groceries. I am also a student, and I work a second job in education to try and make ends meet. We need our schedules two weeks in advance, not one to two days before the start of the next work week. It's hard to plan time to study and even have time to spend with my family or friends. I would love to be able to do more things with them, but unfortunately, without having a set schedule or an advance notice, it's rare that I do. I am also a diabetic, and I suffer with anxiety and depression. Unfortunately, the stress of not having enough money sometimes affects those things. And when you're diabetic, it's important to keep your mental and emotional health in check and stress levels as well. We demand a fair work week policy in the city so that retail workers have reliable hours and schedules just to survive. Thank you.
Thank you, Karina. Next speaker is Jose Avan. I'm gonna call a couple of more speakers, hold on for just a second, Jose.
Sure.
Daniel Cole, are you here?
Yes.
How about Melissa Love? You want to come on up? Jill Thompson? Jill Thompson is not here?
Here.
Is Jill Thompson here? She's not here. Zanaida Perez Fuentes? Zanaida's not here? Okay, I need you to come on up if you hear your name. Jose, go ahead.
Thank you. Let's entertain the idea of a retail worker who holds two jobs to make ends meet, however, struggles because he has to lose shifts due to incompatibility of schedules. Or for instance, a young adult who has decided to throw herself into independence by taking on part-time college courses and a full retail job, but can't attend every class due to unpredictability of her work schedule. Luckily, her classmate Jordan can take notes for her to catch her up. These aren't abstractions, these are people that actually exist in the world. I am Jose Avan Daniel, and work for the National Council of Jewish Women Thrift Shop Sector. I greatly attempt to give my employees predictability and consistency in scheduling because I want them to thrive outside of work. Although we have a smaller retail operation, we encourage that these practices be implemented to large retail companies. We demand a fair work week for all retail employees in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cole?
Good morning, everybody, thank you for having me to come speak to you. My name is Daniel Cole, I'm a current 28-year Walmart associate. I'm here to speak about the Fair Work Week and about my schedule. I urge that you listen and pass the amendment for Fair Work Week, because what's going on with my schedule is that I have to be at work at four in the morning, and my problem is the public transportation, trying to get there on time. And I have trouble getting there on time because I, my schedule is not working with the Fair Work Week schedule. And that's what I'm trying to talk about, is the Fair Work Week schedule, that I have a time to, whether I have to spend time with my family, or some holidays and stuff like that, and that's it. Thank you.
Melissa? Hold on for just a second, I'm gonna call a couple of more speakers. Zanaida, you're right, you're right there, okay. How about Manuel Villanueva? Manuel? It's not here. Natasha Castro? Come on up. How about Alex Sanchez? Alex, is he here? Not here. Dakota Witt? Okay, Melissa, go ahead.
Hi, everyone, my name is Melissa Love.
Get a little closer to the mic, because we can't hear you.
My name is Melissa Love, and I have been a part-time Walmart associate at Long Beach, California, store 4101. I have been working at Walmart for four years, starting as an overnight stalker, as a full-time worker, working 40 hours every week. Last year in 2018, I decided to enroll a student at LATTC to further my education. Since then, I have had to shift over to being part-time at work in order to be a college student. My average day consists of commuting from Long Beach to downtown LA four times a week, each day spending three hours on the, on the bus and trains. Ever since I started, I informed my employer that I could only work certain days and certain hours because of my school schedule. I was no longer guaranteed 40 hours and was facing an unpredictable schedule. With my hours dropping down to 24 hours a week, this makes it difficult to pay for rent, have money for travel, transportation, and pay for my class at LATTC. Instead of my employer working with me and assessing my situation by giving me 40 hours each, before other associates I have access to.
Thank you, Melissa.
They disregard me and gave me hours they felt were too long.
Your time is up.
Well, I have to finish, so.
No, no, you're, everyone gets one minute, everyone's allotted one minute, and you have to cover everything within that timeframe.
Well, can I finish first?
I'm sorry. I didn't allow that for anyone else, though. Thank you. If you want to submit it for public record, you can give it to one of our sergeants. Our next speaker, Zanaida? Followed by Natasha and Dakota.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Zanaida, I'm an organizer with the Southern California Coalition for Occupational Health and Safety. Our organization works to improve the health and safety standards of workers in Southern California, and we are here supporting the Fair Work Week policy. It is time for retail workers to receive fair and predictable work schedules. It is stressful not knowing how much you will make each week. Imagine not knowing how many hours you're going to work next week, what you're going to, what shift you're going to work, or even if you're going to have enough income to pay for rent, childcare, and food. Unfortunately, this is the reality of many retail workers here in our city, and the Fair Work Week policy will help provide some peace of mind for thousands of retail workers, so that they have more predictable schedules, and they are able to take care of other responsibilities outside of work, like visiting a doctor and spending quality time with their family. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and, Natasha, hold on for just a second, Dakota's right behind you. How about Mindy Garland? Is Mindy here?
She's not here.
She's not here? Lynn Shea? Lynn? Lynn's not here? Ms. Huerta? Anybody here? Last name Huerta? Okay, go ahead, Natasha.
Good morning, council members. My name is Natasha Castro, and I'm an organizer with the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy. Our organization has been active in the Fair Work Week LA Coalition, in reaching out to the community and educating them about fair scheduling. In total, 71 organizations have endorsed Fair Work Week LA, including 23 neighborhood councils. We are here today to urge you to pass Fair Work Week. There are workers who cannot be here today but are fighting for a fair work week. Workers like Rebecca, who works here in downtown LA and cannot continue to make ends meet on less than 20 hours per week. There are also parents like Cynthia, who constantly worries about finding childcare and that they will count her hours every single week. Every week, working families across the city worry that they will not be able to pay their rent and groceries because of unfair scheduling, and cannot afford to live without a fair work week any longer. Retail workers deserve a fair work week now. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on for just a second, Dakota, let me call a couple of more people. Berhoven, are you here? Anybody with that name? Berhoven? Jaclyn Richardson? Jaclyn, are you back? Come, come on up, ma'am. Hector? Anybody here named Hector? Is Jabari here? I thought I saw you earlier. Amande Hines? Come on up. Go ahead, Dakota.
Good morning, my name is Dakota Witt, I'm a policy advocate with the ACLU of Southern California, and I stand with the Fair Work Week Coalition in support of this ordinance, because prior to this job, I worked retail. Not only is this ordinance critical to advancing economic justice in LA, but it's necessary to address sexual harassment and gender discrimination in the workplace. At the ACLU, we often represent workers who've suffered sexual harassment and gender discrimination at work. Sexual harassment runs rampant when there's a huge power imbalance between the harasser and the target of the harassment. Supervisors often abuse their power by using scheduling as a form of threat or retaliation. A worker may receive less hours or an erratic schedule after rejecting a supervisor's advance. This is particularly salient in the retail industry, which reports some of the highest rates of sexual harassment and gender discrimination. The ACLU of Southern California urges you to adopt the Fair Work Week policy, so we can work together towards a more equitable workplace free of sexual harassment and gender discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, you want to come on up?
This concerns Russia. There are a significant number of Russians in all major cities in the US. If you want to know if this is true, you have to ask the Russian people. I ask them if they're Russian, and they tell me, if you want to ask them to prove it, if you ask them nicely, they'll tell you also. If you're really nice to them, they will answer you. This information is not on any of the driver's licenses, nor on the US census reports, no census report as far as I know. They have been in the United States since 1967 and before, so this is nothing new. Again, if you want to know if the Russians are really here in significant numbers, all you have to do is ask them, and if you're nice to them, they will tell you. And they have been here in significant numbers since and before 1967, so this is nothing new.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Jabari? Do you want to go first? Jabari or Amadi? Either one of you? Come on up.
Greetings, city council. My name is Jabari Jamani, and as many of you know, I'm a firefighter with the city of Los Angeles, and the director of the Afibah Center in South Los Angeles, where we have for 20 years produced cultural and educational programs which benefit the South Los Angeles residents. When we've spoken out against gentrifying elements, and oftentimes, the adverse impact of program called Destination Crenshaw, we were served an unwarranted and retaliatory eviction by our councilman, Marquis Harris Dawson. We have, on many occasions, and everybody appreciates artwork, beautification of the community which Destination Crenshaw brings. However, when it comes to either aesthetics or substance of helping residents maintain themselves and dig deep roots in this community, we choose substance over aesthetics every time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Hello, I'm Reverend Amadi George Hines. I'm the Associate Minister at Karass Unity Center of African Spiritual Science. We're located at 78th and Western, and, and our church has been in the community for over 75 years. I was recently informed that the Afibah Center is under threat of eviction by the city. Karass has been in association with the Afibah Center for decades. I personally have attended many programs and events at the Afibah Center throughout the years. To my knowledge, the Afibah Center is the only African-centered community center in the city. The black community really cannot afford to lose it. It is the, it is extremely important that people of African descent have a space that is culturally sensitive to our roots. So I implore the city council members to reconsider taking any actions against the Afibah Center and allow it to continue to pursue its mission of expanding cultural community consciousness and addressing the concerns of community members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speakers, hold on, sir, did I call your name?
No.
Okay, hold on just a second, I might call your name, but I've, I've got to go based on the list. Mica Hecker? There you are. Kadija Kamor? Kadija, are you here? Come on up. Remo Anda? Will be the last speaker. Mica, go ahead.
Okay, so, just to address Marquis, you know, as you know, as above, so below, and this is a righteous center with the Afibah Center, you know, you making deals behind the scenes, I mean, they are so temporary. Your soul is on the line, your eternal integrity is on the line right now. So, I mean, I, I mean, this right here, we're, we're dealing with a firefighter, we're in the righteous, this is an opportunity for our community to be able to develop youth, children, grow, and have a, a major part. So, you know, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking to you as a brother right now, because this is, this right here is a temporary, this, this existence, we're, we're in our physical vehicles right now, but when we step into the spiritual realm, it's a whole nother law and order. And I just want you to recognize that and meditate on that, and come correct, brother. That's, that's, that's what we're speaking to, to you about right now. You know, because the Afibah Center is righteous, and we need to be on the side of righteousness all the time. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Herman, stop disrupting this meeting. Sorry about that, ma'am. Go ahead.
I didn't hear what you just said.
I said, go ahead.
Oh, okay, thank you. Again, my name is Kadija, I'm straight out of Compton, I live in Carson now, and I come all the way to Slauson and Crenshaw for cultural enrichment at the Afibah Center. I'm so glad that the councilman is here today, and he's actually looking at me. I've been coming for weeks, and this is the first time that we've gotten eye contact, and I'm really very pleased about that. I heard you on front page one morning, and you said that you could work this thing out. I want this to be a win-win situation. I don't, this, this, this coming here, week after week, listening to people ignoring each other, audience using foul language, is just not the kind of thing that I'm an elder, and it's just not the kind of thing that I like to have to do, but I'm standing up for the Afibah Center, because this could be a win-win situation very easily. There are a lot of places that you have the authority and the power to make, have for your little office. I see the information that was presented to people, and I think that we can do better. I think that you can do better. And I wish that the council would give us some feedback on these catharsises that we're having every week. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody here with the name Remo Anda? Remo Anda? No one here? That concludes general public comment. I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before us, what's next?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred members, are there any announcements? CNN, can we all rise for adjourned motions? Are there any adjourned motions to my left? CNN, any adjourned motions to my right? Well, that concludes our meeting, have a wonderful weekend, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.